All right, I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 18th, 2020 Duval State Council meeting in order. Could you please rise for the reply seat led by Councilmember Jean-Paul?
To comply with the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Sorry, how to make? Councilmember Nicky. Councilmember Iyer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
Councilmember Hober.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Napland. Here in the back. We have a forum.
All right, thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda on consent, please add payroll for February 20th, 2020 in the amount of $156,990.59 and claims for February 18th, 2020 in the amount of $250,164.64. Are there any council members or council committee reports this evening?
Uh, council report.
Clients and administration. All right, thank you. Are there any further additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing then, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have comments from the audience.
Do you do this?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Thanks for catching me on that one. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now, we have comments from the audience, and if you'd like to speak this evening, please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and the clerk will try to do you have three minutes to speak this evening. And if you haven't done a comment before, it is one way with the public speaking to us, but we will have staff or council get back to you if there's things to call out. So with that, first on the list, we do have folks signed in. So Laura Smith, what would you do for your first question?
It's funny to be down here. I know. You can come up, I'll be having this space too. I'm Laura Smith, Director of the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network, and first I want to thank you all for your continued leadership and dedication to the residents of Duval. Tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to authorize human service grant funding allocations, and I want to thank you. I know that that process and getting that ball rolling has been hard enough to push along, and I want to thank you for your commitment to that process, and that is going to happen tonight. Because I know that you all know that there's a lack of human services in this Snoqualmie Valley, and this funding that you allocate tonight for whomever it gets allocated to will start to chip away at that lack of services. Thank you. At the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network, we believe that healthy communities support healthy families, and healthy families support healthy youth. And so I just wanted to share with you a couple of things that are coming up that I think you'll be interested in, if not, maybe you'll know someone. The first one is improving communications with preteens and teens, one night workshop, because who doesn't need a little more help with communicating with teenagers? There's no time to go in. Oh, come on in. There's that. And the other piece, I was so excited, one of my colleagues from up in Watcom reached out, they were bringing, his name is Dr. Chan Holman, he's the author of Hope Rising, up to Watcom, and they wanted to know if I might know any other organizations that would be interested in hosting the author of Hope Rising for an evening of the science and power of hope. And all I could think of was the last nine months in Duval, Incarnation, and our students at Cedar Crest, and how much we really want to host the power of hope here. So this one is going to be open to offer the whole entire community. Had Dinner with Lisa, the Senior Center is going to come onboard as a partner, hopefully both the cities. But it's a one night where we're really talking about hope as the essential component in resilience. And you can build resilience by building hope. Evidence case, and it's going to be a great night for our community. So I hope that you personally will choose to come out and help you promote it as well. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the side of this list is Ms. Lisa Gager.
Hi, I'm Lisa Gager from the Snow Valley CU Center. I don't think I can say it better than Laura just given, but yeah. We all are just excited that you're looking at human services because it makes a difference to every person in this community, whether they're young or they're old. So, thank you for doing that process, and I just wanted to reiterate how important it is. That this city's involvement shows how much this city really cares for its inhabitants and for the people here. And I'm not saying this well, but I just wanted to say thank you, and what you're doing is important. And then I wanted to just make a quick announcement too. Fun stuff coming up at the Senior Center, so I hope that you'll come join us for the dinner and dessert auction. It's March 28th at the Senior Center, that's a Saturday night, and it's going to be an awesome dinner. I know we're going to have steak and some other food. But it will be worth it. So, and then we also have Rainbow Bingo coming up this Friday, and then again in February, February 21st, March, February 21st and March 20th. So, thank you all for your service. I really appreciate all the time that it takes to be a council member, so thank you.
Next on the list, we have Melissa Haylen from Incompass.
Hello, thank you both, and echo everything you just said, and would just like to add thanking you all for considering us for the human services funding. And at Incompass, we, over this last year, we served 171 Duval families, or 171 children, including their families, and we do this through preschool toddler groups here in the community, as well as pediatric therapy services for children zero to eight, through speech therapy, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. We have a mobile therapy unit that allows us to offer speech therapy and pediatrical health services to communities that sometimes are underserved. It's harder for families to get out to a clinic, so we can bring that. You may have seen it at Incarnation Elementary School, or here in your local parade. And we also have large family support services that support all of our families in the community. So again, thank you so much for considering all of us this time, we appreciate it.
Next, we have Allison Elbuthy.
Hi, Allison Elbuthy, I am here representing the Duval Chamber of Commerce as a board member and a current secretary. My husband and I own Sazini Mediterranean Grill, which is here in town. We live at 26926 Northeast Virginia Street. The Chamber is working on some really exciting new projects this year, as well as continuing some of our successful existing ones. One of those is our Welcome Bags, if you are aware of them, which we deliver a full bag of promotional items and helpful resources to every homeowner that moves into town. This is going to be our second year of participating in the Snow Valley Dollars for Scholarship Program. We are really excited to be offering two $1,000 scholarships to high school seniors with an interest in business education, and this is completely funded by our members. We're also really excited to welcome Mayor Oberlander to our meeting next month, Thursday, March 5th. If any of you council members are also looking to join us, we'd love to have you for our state of the union address. And we also just want to continue to show appreciation to the city and staff members for continued collaboration and support throughout the year with the Chamber. Thank you.
Next, we have Carrie Harris from Holy Innocence Food Factory.
Hi, I'm Carrie from Holy Innocence Food Factory, and I have to thank you guys for the human services grants and all you're doing, I really appreciate it. And I apparently did not get all the information in on time. I had the grant there, but I did not have my federal tax information and the budgets and things like that that I started up during all that snow. I quit the law, I quit right that day, or it court ended, and did not hear back. I guess I did get an email on January 23rd, went into my spare home, didn't see it till I was made aware of it last week when I was on vacation. So, I did email all the information over, I hope that it's sufficient, and I hope I could still be considered, considering that interim grant was there, it was just the miscellaneous information, the Board of Directors, those kinds of things that weren't complete, so the grant was completed. Just so you know, we are the Old Food Bank that serves Duval, and we do have a lot of people in need in this area. We serve about 50 families a week, and we're open Tuesday nights and Wednesday mornings, so they have time to come after work, which is an important piece of that, which didn't used to be, it used to be two times on Wednesday, neither time was after work time, because many of the people are working, just not making enough to get by without a little bit of extra help. During the holidays, we've served 85 to 90 families through Thanksgiving meals and Christmas, which included gas certificates, gift cards, gifts, and food certificates for their families to help them make the holidays a little bit brighter. Again, I just apologize that I did not have it complete, and I still hope that you'll consider helping us out with the grant. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening?
Seeing then, we will move on to scheduled items. First up, the mayor's report. But with the short things first, tomorrow we'll be meeting for the Sound Cities Association Board Meeting in the morning, and we'll probably be doing legislative updates and those types of, reviewing those types of issues, as well as our work from the retreat last month. Wednesday is the Sound Cities Association Networking Dinner with the keynote speaker of the 28th of July, 15. I haven't heard of any other council members that are attending. Okay. And then, on Thursday, I've been asked by AWC to testify on the Local Transportation Options Revenue Bill, so I'm going to make a quick trip down to Olympia, testify in favor of providing more local options, and come back to Duval. As Allison mentioned, I'll be giving the State of the City on March 5th. Traditionally, it's been the Chamber that's hosted for, I don't know, probably at least 10, 15 years, the State of the City Address, which for those that are unable to attend, we will be video recording as usual and putting it up online, so everyone has access to it. Last week, I attended the Association Washington Cities Mayor's Exchange, and obviously not a lot of interesting news coming out of Olympia. Hot Office tomorrow for the House of Origin, some of the bills that we were concerned about have already died, which is good, others have not, so we continue to advocate on those. But one of the, I think, most positive things coming out of that meeting was the Economic Revenue Forecast Council updated in their preliminary revenue report. In September, the report expected about 30, 35% chance of a recession within the next year. They are now not predicting any recession, that risk has gone down more than 10% in the last three months. So the revenue, the formal revenue forecast, this is just draft, will come out, I believe, tomorrow. The chief economist let us know, and I forwarded the presentation to all of council as well. Inflation is tame, the state is expecting $169 million in additional revenue. They're also including expecting $74 million additional in rate, which is the highest ever. They expect that this is partly because a lot of high-end homes over $1.5 million closed before the end of the year to beat new tax implications, so they don't expect to see that high again, but they do expect to see sales continue to be strong. We have a strong labor market, which they're continuing to be encouraged of. They are worried about the geopolitical risks of what's going on globally and nationally. If they are concerned about the coronavirus, and expecting that if that takes hold here, we can see a slowdown in our economy, but only 1.5% maximum is what they were projecting. Again, no recession this year, consumer confidence has increased, job growth in our state remains high, our unemployment continues to be low, and the interesting statistic now is that people who have previously given up looking for work are coming back to work. So that's really positive news for the state. In the presentation, there is a lot of interesting, by category, employers. The most interesting thing to me, because it impacts our community significantly, is that IT workers, the average pay in Washington State is $200,000 per IT worker, and it's about 120 nationally. So we are significantly above the national average in that market. The 737 MAX is a primary cause for export drops, the other side of it is the terrorists in China, so ag is decreasing, which is not surprised, surprising based on the terrorists and the other countries that are slowing down our exports. So the Federal Reserve, oh, okay, I don't have the information on that one. They're hiking risk of downturn in construction, they're expecting with the high, the years of high growth in residential construction that we'll start to see a tailor off in the next couple of years. I think our permits in Duval will probably not meet that trend for a while, but that's not necessarily bad news either, it's just a leveling off of the economy. And what they're expecting to see then is from 12% to 8% drop off when that happens. Manufracturing is actually up in our state after decline, and then the federal debt, this was a really stunning number, percentage of GDP is 90% of our GDP at this point. So they're saying that with the federal government, we'll be, have the highest debt rate since World War II in the very near future. Again, they're projecting 1.5% to 2% growth through 2025, so again, unless something major happens, they're not predicting a recession at this point, and moderate growth and that continued kind of steady growth curve. Oil prices are down, personal incomes continue to grow, the housing forecast continued to increase, but they feel that the peak was definitely the end of 2019. So again, the ag side of the industry of the economy has decreased, so 28% of the overall layoffs in the state this year have been in fruit packaging, which is directly a result of international trade policy. There has not been much aerospace impact yet with the result of 737 MAX. That certification is going to take a while longer, but I do know firsthand that the fixes are being made on the plane, so once I get that certification, I would expect that things are going to ramp up pretty quickly. So that's just the brief update, it's good news, the sky's not falling, it's much better than we expected even a few months ago, and should provide some good baseline information for our finance director as she starts to make her revenue projections for the next annual. And with that, that's going to be my report. Great. So we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, so tomorrow we have a council chat scheduled from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM in the dining area across from Starbucks inside of Safeway, so there's all that seating. That's where I set it up so people can get some coffee. Can anyone attend that tomorrow?
Anyone? What time is it?
9:00 AM, and it's just an hour, 9 to 10. I'm not capable. Not to put you on the spot now, you can let me know after if so I could give you some stuff. I can potentially go, I just had something come up, so it would be easier for me to not, but if anyone can, just talk to me after the meeting, and that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. So next up, council committee reports, first is public safety.
So, Public Safety met on February 5th with Police Chief Kerry Hurt, also Amy McHenry, and Diane Brudniki, and myself. We did elect a chair, I was outvoted and became chair gladly, and we had several things. It was one of the most efficient meetings I've had in a while. I really appreciated, Chief Hurt came with a packet of information for us, we covered items, including electing the chairperson, we reviewed and discussed the school resource officer, that's our police officer who's at the high school, at grade school here in town. Those were two separate items, there's two separate agreements we have for those. We had a general discussion on other safety needs, including simple things but important things. When officers respond to the high school, they don't have great communication, whether with their public safety radios that often don't work inside the building, and their computers don't work up there, so they need to come back to City Hall to fill up basic paperwork. So we're discussing ways that we can get both of those to function more efficiently. There were a lot of other side things that they shared with us, just kind of updated on how things are going in town. Duval is usually at the very top west of one of the safest incorporated cities in the state, which we are very proud of our police officers for that work they do. In the future, there's several other things that we'll be working on, there's a camping ordinance, we do have folks that camp out in our parks sometimes, and we don't really have a way to address that. There's police union negotiations this year, and we were also going to discuss potential other funding options to help fund public safety, it's a huge part of our budget, and looking to find other ways to be able to more efficiently pay for those services. And that was it, we don't have another meeting scheduled right now, but we're working on that with Chief Hurt, so hopefully in the next several weeks, we'll be able to have one more meeting. Any questions or comments? Amy?
I just wanted to add, and sorry if you hit this, that the Chief Hurt is adding documents into the OneDrive, so if other council members want to read notes or anything like that, it's all in there.
I do want to say I appreciated, Councilmember Napland had done some research and provided background on school resource officers throughout the region, so we could take a look and see what other school district and cities are doing, and that was really helpful to us. So I think that's some of the information that we posted as well.
Finance.
First of all, one of the things that came up in our discussion at the last meeting was whether or not all the council members were aware how our documents were being put in SharePoint, because there's a separate folder set up for that, and our materials are being put there, including all the backups. So if folks aren't sure about where to find our documents, you should talk with Dana to make sure that they're accessing that, because it's not filed, I think, quite the same way the public safety information is. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. At the first meeting, we went over the state audit management letter, we went over a strategy for audit resolution and established some priorities. We didn't go over the 2019, 2020 budget priorities, but we did talk about the importance of getting out corrected third and fourth quarter statements, so that is underway. A big part of the last meeting has been the continuing discussion about the form of reports. That is something that's been discussed, I think, every finance administration meeting since we started meeting, and it's really critical that those reports not only embrace the kinds of reports that were produced in the past, but also be detailed enough that council can really look at budget to actuals. And I think that's something that will continue to be discussed. We saw some new ideas for reports, those are being evaluated by the council members to see how they, if they provide adequate detail and cross tabulation with the form of budget information that we get. So that's going to be a big piece of work, I think, for this year. If the reports look great but don't tie back, then they're not going to be user friendly, and then it's just going to cause more time at council and Cal to unravel those. The other thing that was discussed, and of course this is going to be pursued additionally, is the need for additional staffing for the community development, building permit process. And it was, we spent a lot of time talking about that and how that needs to be estimated. I know that that work is ongoing with Dana and Laura. The issue that I think we circled around repeatedly was how that information is really trended out, because really when you look at a development cycle, it's not a three-year issue, it's really a five-year issue. And even with an 8% to 10% decline in development throughout the state, we have a very, very, very healthy pipeline. And, you know, at least right now, buyer interest in the projects that are underway is pretty healthy, pretty strong. If that continues throughout the year, there will be more and more pressure on community One of the things that I cautioned in the meeting, and I'm representing this really as more of my observation, is that this is a very complicated issue. And I'm, the more I think it through, and I think I understand it, I've been tracking it since, for a long, long time, and the more I think it through, the more I have come to believe that this is such an important issue, and it has such a substantial impact on the way we do business and our long-term budget priorities, that a small meeting will not be sufficient to really get the desired outcome that is, to me, very apparent. And there's a lot of components. One is just the sheer cost to do this, and the importance of getting adequate staff, not just for review of plans, but the ongoing inspection process. There's another piece of just the hiring process, should we proceed with that, and, you know, if there's an internal promotion or selection that has a domino impact, so you have to make sure that you are advertising with a strategy in mind in case that vacancy were to occur. So, I mean, I could go down a list. And underlying all of this is when you look at our salary, salary wage and benefit line item at the end of 2019, we still need to unravel roughly $700,000 that was not fully explained. And so until we have all of that information, my concern is we will make incremental decisions about a crucial public safety issue in the city. So, we talked around these issues, a few of those comments are my own, and I'd be happy to identify those. But if we need to have a special meeting to take on this, what I consider to be an emergency situation in the building permit process, we can do so over Section 5.4 of the Procedures Manual. It takes four council members to support that in writing, so that that could be scheduled. It only requires a 24-hour notice, it does have to be noticed, it's real clear what OD has to do, it's not complicated. But I'm just very, very concerned, if we don't fully understand this issue, we're going to make a mistake, and the mistake is not going to have a small financial implication, it will have a very large one in the long run. So, that is an option available to council, Section 5.4 Emergency Meeting purely to discuss and hopefully completely resolve the need for staffing in community development, building permit review, and so forth. It will impact everything in the city if we don't do it right. So that's my report and my four minutes.
I would like to add, I'm very appreciative that the Finance Committee is taking this issue seriously now. This has been a very strong concern of mine, and as I expressed in the committee, the wheels are falling off, we do not have enough staff to do the day-to-day work, and it's not just community development, it's public works as well. We had the staff workload analysis that we had to put on hold until we got a finance director in place. The finance director's dusted that off, and we're hoping to bring it forward for approval within the next couple of weeks, and that one item is really critical to our statewide, our citywide look, because it's never been done. Everything's been piecemeal over the years, and we are in a state of almost emergency because of the fact that we had 130 building permits dumped on the city at the end of December. We have two people in the planning department, discussions historically in council have been not staffing to highs, staffing to averages, but we are in a situation that is, that's not possible, and I broached with the Finance Committee that we really need to be serious about getting the positions built, getting Laura, Community Development Director, the assistance necessary to do the work. And it is, in fact, very close to an actual state of emergency at this point. I know that there are new regulations that have been put in place that make it more difficult for us to bring the folks forward, but as the Finance Committee did see difficult for us to bring the folks forward, but as the Finance Committee did see when the Treasury report is final, our revenues continue to be above what was projected. Our expenditures continue to be low. Where we're going to really go wrong is if we have to contract out consultants for high-cost work, that we still have to have directors review. So this is a conversation that's long overdue. Our finance director is currently on vacation. Ms. Thomas has been doing the work necessary to show what we need. And from my perspective, as I've been telling council the last few years, we don't have enough people to do the work at hand, and it's time to move that forward. We are at mission critical at this point. That also comes with recognition of staffing up for this unexpected time does not mean that those positions stay in the city permanently. You do what you need to do to get the work done, but as we saw with the storm last week, our public works folks haven't been able to get to their INI work, and it put our sewer system at capacity for the infiltration in the old sewer pipes, water that normally doesn't even get to the sewer system. So all of these years of different maintenance are having a huge impact on our ability as a city to get core work done.
I want to add one more thing to this, which is that it has been a priority of this council. I mean, it wasn't my council when it was said as the priority, but I certainly have sat in enough meetings. We have got to move forward on hiring a city administrator. Correct. And it's got to be done in the context of this action related to the building department, because we have a chunk of money right now in the budget that we have to sort through. And what I would like to see, and I'm speaking only as myself, for myself here, but what I would like to see, if we are going to have an in-depth discussion, I would like to see a clear proposal come from administration on the city administrator hire, because we cannot operate the city any longer without a city administrator that has sufficient background and experience to manage a vastly different emerging city than what Duval has been in the past. And it's interesting, because I've spoken with a couple other cities that have gone through this serious growth cycle. And what they're all saying is, it's painful, and we need somebody to help us administratively with a depth of experience that's going to guide us through that. And so this is all part of why I say we can't do this piecemeal anymore. It's just not going to work. A system starts to break when it's done piecemeal. And, you know, we, council has already given you its input on hiring a city administrator. I hope that you will bring that proposal back within 30 days, 45 days. That would be my request there.
That's the goal. However, council has also made it very clear that unless you have clear financial information, it's been at multiple public meetings, the council's not willing to move forward with it. I've asked multiple times to move forward with at least getting processes going, and I was told no. So I'm very pleased that now council is getting behind us, because this has been what I've been saying for a year and a half. And we will get that information, but as we recall, our finance director's been here less than two months. There's a lot of core things that have to get done, and we are moving as fast as we can with the resources that we have. We do not have enough resources to do all of this all at once. That is the fact of the matter. And I just wanted to make that clear, but I'm also saying that I'm appreciative that this recognition by council has now been made and that we are able to finally potentially move forward.
Well, we know this pipeline has been there for a long time, and I'm not going to, it doesn't matter now why we're in the situation we're in, but it's very clear we've got to discipline ourselves to get this stuff. And, you know, I know Dana's new and all of that, but, you know, we, surely by now, we have year in, year end 2019 budget data. She's definitely able to generate reports, so we don't need fancy reports. We need line item detail, and let's just get going as fast as we can.
Councilmember Wright.
I mean, I guess I would just like to, you know, slow the roll a little bit. I mean, I mean, it sounds, I just heard two people having a conversation about something and referring to, you know, council's, you know, general consensus approval. I guess this is an ongoing conversation. This is a new stage to the ongoing conversation, and this is the first I've heard of it. So, I mean, I think, out of respect for other council members that might help me on the Finance Committee, I think it's, it sounds like there's some catching up that needs to occur in terms of the, and out of respect to Councilmember Lengel, you know, there was some of that was the report of the Finance Committee, and some of that was her point of view as a council member. So, I mean, I think definitely a consensus needs to be gained here, so as to, you know, what direction to go, when's the right time, so.
Councilmember Hocken.
I agree with Councilmember Iyer. This was a report of the Finance Committee. I don't believe that we, that we as a council have said that to go hire a city administrator tomorrow.
No, that is not implied.
I'm just, just know that we need to, if you want, I don't know if we can do it, but if you want to add something to the agenda so we can have more discussion, we can do that, but this was just me reporting that was supposed to be done.
For all of the information that council's requesting to move these things forward, it's going to take the finance director more time. Ms. Thomas, for the positions that we're discussing, community development, has still been working on the job descriptions. That takes a significant amount of time. You also have to go through the collective bargaining units before those things are approved as well, before it even gets to council. So these things do take time, and now that there's new rules in place with reclassifications, with the three-touch rule, et cetera, council, when these things do come forth for the full council discussion, council will need to make some decisions on our timelines and if they want to follow the three-touch, or if they want to move forward more quickly, et cetera. So, you know, I think the conversation with the Finance Committee was definitely good. And so I was taking that report as the Finance Committee, so thank you.
As far as our, I missed the last council meeting, but prior to that, we had a Finance Committee meeting, and I feel like some stuff was brought forward as if the committee had agreed to it. And I don't believe that we had consensus on some of this stuff, so just so you know. And it has to do with attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just want you to know.
Thank you. Councilmember Hocken.
Well, I think for our citizens here and those that watch by video, so the simple thing is, there's a lot of pressure on us because of all the development going on right here in town, and so our handful of staff are really under a lot of pressure to get plans reviewed, permitting done. So that's what the issue is. Logistically, for council members, in 10 days, we have our meeting with administration. We're all getting together to talk about some key items, and one of those key items is certainly at least the, one of the key positions we need right away is somebody to help with plan with the permitting. But there's others we'll talk about as well. So we're going to get a chance to talk about it there. And then to Councilmember Lengel's point, I think there, you know, after that meeting in 10 days, we can say, do we need a special meeting?
Right.
What do we need to move forward? What information? We never want to be in a hurry. I mean, there are emergency things we need to decide, but we never want to try to make a snap decision on something. And so we do want to make sure that you have the data and information, that there's a clear package put together to explain what the recommendations are, what those impacts are currently in the budget as well as long-term. So I expect that we'll have those at the proper time, and so I don't want you to feel like, you know, something's being rushed through for you. At the same time, I do want to underline what God has said to me, this is really busy. You know, I had a chance to talk to Toll Brothers, I think they said they're sending 10 to 12 new permits per month, and they expect to be doing it for a year or two. I mean, this is a very busy time for us. So the need is very real for those that are trying to get through the plan review and permitting process. So we'll get a chance to discuss that at length, and concerns can be raised, and hopefully we can come up with some decisions, wise decisions on how to move forward with it.
Councilmember Natlin.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Lengel for sharing the report, and there was some, some statements in there that I think are your personal, which you acknowledge, and I appreciate that. So I just wanted to mention that the committee acknowledged there was a need and frustration about that the staffing levels are inadequate at this point. And from my perspective, the feedback I felt like that was given was, we understand the need, but we also need to be responsible and see how it fits into the budget. And so acknowledging a need doesn't mean you can afford it.
That's absolutely right.
So I think we acknowledge that it would be great and better to have a city administrator, and that doesn't mean that we start moving forward with making plans to advertise, at least from my perspective of what was discussed. It was that we do need to just be diligent about getting our finances in order and getting reports in order, and not just look, can we squeeze this in this year and make it work? Because we've had some, you know, really strong development revenue, and we had some gaps in positions, and so we had some extra money because we had lapses. And that's one-time gain. That's not an ongoing amount.
I'm not suggesting.
To hire the most expensive position in the entire city.
I'm not suggesting that.
So anyway, I just wanted to say, from my perspective, since it was also shared that there was not a consensus that I felt of the committee to start moving forward on some of these things, the request was that we acknowledge there was a need, we want to find a way to respond, but, and the request was, can we bring it to council? And it was, if it comes to council, we have to have justification that we have enough money to do it. And so that was the feedback we gave. And so, anyway, I just wanted to show that.
I concur with that, Councilmember Natlin. That's definitely, there is no intention by administration to use one-time monies to bring in the staffing that's needed. If that were to occur, it would be strictly on the community development side for those shorter-term, two- to five-year positions, and that you readjust your staffing levels as conditions change. So to be clear, that's my, ultimately where I want to be at, because I know that council's not going to move forward with anything without that data, and it takes time to get that data. So we're going as fast as we can, but we just don't have the people to do it as fast as we want to get that and as fast as others want to get that.
Councilmember Lengel.
I want to make sure I clarify for Councilmember Iyer. The reason I have talked about a deep dive into this issue is precisely what you said. We're being told things in finance administration like, under statute, we have 120 days to issue permits, and that state statute might change to 90 days. We've already had 130, is that right, Laura? 130 permit requests drop on us. So that means the clock is ticking on those reviews. And, you know, I'm not trying to rush this through council, but my fear is if we don't really focus on this problem, understanding at least what the mayor has specifically in mind for what she's doing on city administrator, my worry is that that discussion will just keep kind of floating out there. And it doesn't have to be, I didn't mean to imply in 24 hours from today, okay? But this issue alone would absorb everything in the retreat to fully understand the seriousness of the decision around the money for these staff changes, to really, really understand it. And quite frankly, we still don't have, you know, complete year-end 2019 financial information. So, you know, again, apparently the clock is ticking on these permits, and, you know, I just worry that if we try to do it at a retreat, that's fine to start the discussion, but at some point, we're really going to have to dive into this issue, and we don't appear to, based on what we've reported to us, we don't appear to have the time to wait to the end of the first quarter to start looking at it. And it pains me to think of another meeting, but I'm just saying that's an option to us for precisely why you said what you said, because it's not going to be an easy thing to sort out, and we don't have, at least to my satisfaction, the kind of line item of detail on our financial information we need, because we don't even know if there's money in the budget to move around. You know, we still don't know what the salary wages and benefit line item is, you know, why, what that reconciliation is from 2019 to 2020. So that, you know, those are big things. So that's why I said, I don't want to freak you out, basically.
And those things are being worked on. It's, you know, it's, you can only do so much in a day, and with all of the day-to-day activities, we're working on it as fast as we can. It has been a strong priority of mine for quite a while, as it is becoming of councils as well. So we're going as fast as we can with the resources we have, and that's all I can say at this point. Our finance director isn't here to respond to those comments, because I think she would have a lot of information to share that would calm council's nerves. And, you know, I encourage a meeting with me and the finance director to discuss these issues further, to give some more realistic timelines of when things can be done. Moving on, the upcoming presentations are probably here in this evening. In our new business, we have agenda builds one day.
Come here. The admin report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Admin report. You're right. Admin report, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and our partners in the community members during this evening. I'll make it shorter than the last conversation I promised. DFA celebration is this Saturday at the Crane, so hopefully I'll see the majority of council there. You all received an email, and I will be there. That was a project that was 25 years in the making, so they'd like to celebrate. Most of the land use bills of the legislature, thank goodness, have not come forward, including the 90-day block one.
Died.
So that died, so that's honestly a lot of good news for us, but still, 120 days is not very long, but I thought that was a glimmer of good news. Our 2019 year-end budget has been completed. It's in its second review, so it'll go with the next Finance Administration Committee, and we're, I shouldn't say we're, is also reutilizing essentially the recording form that it's had for several years, where it shows year over year. So it's a very familiar one that you've seen, we just didn't have it last year, you know, obviously due to some staffing issues in the Finance Department. So I saw a first draft of that last Friday, and so when Dana comes back, she'll be going through that with the mayor and directors, so that we all sit down and look at it, and your next Finance Administration Committee will see that as well. So I think that's pretty good progress, you know, beginning here at the end of February. The city council retreat on 2/28, so just as a reminder, we're working with Councilmember Rainnington to finish up the agenda on that. And on that, a portion of that time will be committed to community development, staff evening discussion. We have worked on a revenue expenditure forecast for 2020 to 2025, to look at all of our pipeline permits. So I worked on that last week, worked with the public works director on it. You know, it is kind of, there is some why, because you just don't know what the, you know, the economy's going to do, but right now, we're definitely struggling to stay up on permit review. Next month, the second week of the month, our directors will be giving our work plan presentations to the mayor, so that's good news. We're not left behind on that task, but we're going to catch up. I sent an email to council kind of mid-afternoon. It was just an update on the RQ for community services. We did extend it by an additional week when we went and looked to see how many firms had gone in and grabbed the RFP. We felt that it was kind of low, so we put out an additional amount of time, and we went to work through Google and looked up some more firms and sent out some additional emails that weren't through the MRSC roster. I also met with the mayor today to talk about what the timeline's pre-truncated, especially when we closed the week earlier on the RQ, talking about the review of all of the proposals that come in and then the interview process. So I don't know if you've seen that email or not, but the mayor would like to have a council member on that committee, specifically the mayor of the town. So I sent that in an email as well. I did want to let you know that we are continuing to look at storm damage from the floods, you know, after the fifth flood, it's starting to take its toll. You know, after the fifth flood, it started to take its toll. And so we did see some pretty significant damage to McCormick Park. And so we're assessing that. I don't know that you can, you know, repair when the park falls into the river and goes downstream. We'll continue to look at that. We also are looking at some additional damage, like in Taylor's Park. We had a slide in that area, so probably work to look out on that. We'll probably have to bring in a geotech engineer to look at that. We installed a sulfur pile wall about a half dozen years ago out there. And it looks like we might have to do it again in another area. And that was a pretty expensive project, so stay tuned for that. We're also obviously preparing for our next ad hoc committee meeting. We were notified by another developer that the May final plan, which will be at the next meeting, that they'll drop an additional 99 permits off for us to review. So we are creating some additional process within the building department to try and do the best we can in leaving them in, because you can't go into a de facto moratorium. So we're working through that, and we're now implementing that the first week of March. We've also initiated that they have to provide a deposit, because we don't collect any money when those permits come in. So we have 150 permits in with no revenue. So we're working through that as well. We will be getting, beginning probably the first week of April, 10-hour workdays and five days a week. So we'll be looking at approximately 10 hours of overtime a week within the building community development department to try and keep pace during that time. So, and my discussion for today.
Mayor President Rainnington?
Thank you for all your work this afternoon, for sending out that information on the RFP process for legal services. I think it's just a perfect example of an item that we can really collaborate on with the mayor and the city council together. We realize that most of those legal services are used by city staff, not by council per se. But almost everything that we touch, especially with policy, needs to be reviewed and looked at by legal services. So it's a very important topic for us as well. So I just encourage us to continue to look for ways we can collaborate. I think because the contract, potentially executive session, might be an important place for us to do that with council. And I appreciated my conversation with the mayor today. I think she appreciates why that's important to us. And hopefully, we can continue to work together on the collaboration on the final decisions that are made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now moving on to new business, Agenda Bill 20-12, and our mayor, Oreniner's appointment of William Chapel to the Duval Planning Commission position for a four-year term ending 12/31/23 for discussion and/or decision. And I'll just say that we had two good candidates. Only one of them had been, one of them had never applied for anything volunteer position within the city before. The person I'm recommending for appointment has been trying to get involved with the city at multiple levels and really has a grasp of the neutrality and importance of the planning commission and the roles and responsibilities. So I think he will serve the city well in a non-political manner, really focusing on what planning commission is supposed to do. And I'm hoping that the other person will continue to stay interested, because when another position opens up, I would certainly be happy to appoint him as well. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'm going to confirm, Mayor, Oreniner's appointment of William Chapel to Chapel to the Duval Planning Commission position for a four-year term ending 12/31/23.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Last item of business this evening is Agenda Bill 20-13, authorized food and services grant funding allocation for discussion and/or decision. And recognizing that we, you know, have an entity that wasn't able to get everything in on time, council can choose to suspend the rules and continue the discussion at the next meeting and wait for the final allocation if you so choose. But it is your policy, so it's up to you. So with that, is there a council member that would like to lead this discussion? Councilmember McHenry?
So, yeah, I think that's the number-one item that I'd like feedback from every council member on, if that's what you're thinking as well. That, basically, we didn't rank the food pantry application, because it wasn't complete, and we didn't hear back. Obviously, it was a communication snafu. So we can either proceed with what we have, or we can take the time for the committee to rank that one and then see how that shifts anything. So I just wanted to know what council thinks about one or the other. Either just move forward at this point, or rank it and come back.
Councilmember Hope?
My preference would be to hold off, but is there a reason that we should make a decision quickly?
It's, right now, your policy states that the final decision for allocation will be at the final meeting in February. So you would just need to vote to suspend your policy to extend the allocation date to further your consideration. We can extend it to the third, and if you're still not comfortable, we can extend it again if we have to. So that's why it's on tonight for decision.
I just am in favor of that. I feel like we've kind of delayed getting the process started. So for me, I think it's okay to, you know, this year to, you know, maybe in future years, when we get notice out faster, and we get, you know, maybe we should be more diligent about timelines. But I don't know that that, personally, that that's as important this year. But I appreciate all the time that you've put into this.
And just for clarification, I followed the notice requirements in the policy. So I did notice, I did notice it when it was supposed to be noticed. And I put in, you know, so that's one of the reasons why council wanted to go through this process, to look at the policy again later, which is the ad hoc committee's second chore after this is done. So, but I did want to clarify-
It is done correctly. It was just that we didn't do it last year, so that was-
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, thanks.
I guess I would clarify-
Councilmember Lengel and Mayor President Rainnington? If we were to, maybe I'm not understanding you as well, is if we were to delay this decision, then is what we're saying is we would potentially change the allocations from what is in our packet? Is that what we would be saying?
What's in your packet now is a recommendation of the committee, which we can, we'll get into shortly and explain where we were coming from with it and how it worked. But, yeah, I mean, yes, it would delay it until the next meeting. So we would have to go back and rank that one, see how it falls in with the others.
Okay. Okay, then my feedback on this is that if we were to delay the decision to finish the ranking, my preference would be to not change the recommendations that have already been made and to instead look at the relevance of the proposal and make a decision about whether or not we should produce additional social service funding for the food pantry. Because as much as I can totally appreciate, I've run so many grant processes, but I think we have to also recognize that it's very important to set a standard. And unfortunately, something got missed with the snow. So I understand and think flexibility is fair, but I don't think it should be at the expense of changing recommendations for those that did comply. So that's my feedback.
Thank you. Do you have a preference on it?
Yeah, I can wait to comment till anybody else has any other comments.
Mayor President Rainnington was next to mine.
Well, first, thanks for all of you putting in. We, I think we, as a council, appreciate that we have a small amount of money that we actually put towards human services. And when we looked at some of the other cities in the region, many of them are much larger amounts, other larger cities. But if we did it kind of in the amounts they do, at least the percentage they do, we'd be about five times. So, you know, we're a small town, but we just recognize we won't want to be able to find ways to be able to put more money into these critical services that you provide that we don't as a city. So thank you. Getting back to this actual topic, there are sometimes unintended consequences when out of our heart, we want to be able to give to the food pantry and give them an opportunity. It does delay money going, and one of our key things was trying to get that money out so we could get to where it needs to go, especially since we didn't do it last year. There often are other folks in the community that wanted to put in, but they couldn't get it in the timeline. So if they see it delayed or, you know, pushed out, then their questions come up, can we now put in? So as much as I ache, and I hope all of us don't eat personally the food pantry, it just does outstanding work in our community. But I would recommend that we move forward with the plan we have, the allocations. I appreciate the committee, the work that was done by city staff and council members to work through that. It's never easy when there's such a great need in the community in limited funds. But I think at this point in time, getting that money out to where it can go to work, and we certainly later can take a look at trying to add additional money so we can meet this growing need in our community.
Councilmember Hope? Can you comment again? Yes. Well, unless, actually, we haven't heard from Councilmember Napland or Councilmember Ira, so if you have something to say, I'd like you to speak first, and then... If you don't have anything to say, that's fine. Just to be clear, just to be making sure you have the opportunity.
I'm really torn on this, because I do feel like it was a pretty unusual year with the weather. But I also do understand the complexity of delaying it for one. Then would it, you know, create more issues with, you know, other people who would have got it in, but couldn't? I, I'm torn on it. I'm really excited to get this money to work. I would like to make a decision tonight. But honestly, I, I'm willing to do whatever the rest of council prefers.
Councilmember Ira?
You know, in our recommendation, I felt that, you know, we had this process set in place, and I think it does, I, my concern with delaying would be the question of, you know, it just opens it up. And we tried to our best to, you know, score, you know, use the process that we had. And yes, the process isn't perfect, and it can be updated. But I felt that, you know, folks make applications, the applications speak to themselves, and then, you know, we allocate in accordance with those applications. And, you know, and because there was some, you know, consideration of maybe changing the allocations and splitting them up, and we felt that it just, it creates, it just muddies the water in terms of the process. And I think it's to have a fair process, that's fair to the community. I mean, you have to have standards and deadlines and those are what you try to meet. And it doesn't always work out, and I'm, and I'm sorry for that. But I, my preference would be to go with the recommendation that we provided, move on, address what we can in the future, and, you know, increase our allocations to human services so that we can, you know, broaden our ability to help different agencies. So, you know, I think it's, it is concerning when we go from year over year, when we go from, you know, our human services budget went from, you know, a half. And I, you know, I, I think the money, I think we could find the money. I think we could have at least found that level of allocation. And, you know, we're all learning as council members how to influence the process and figure out ways appropriately. So to do that, I think that would be definitely one of my goals in the future, is to increase, to work to encourage, increase that allocation and get it back up and beyond where it was before. But I think right now, we have a process in place. I think opening it up to the, too much possibility of, you know, everything comes into play which you can change. And I think that'd be my concern. So I would prefer to move forward with the recommendations as how we're going to act.
So it sounds like we have a general consensus to-
We would need a motion.
Okay, do we need a motion to?
Yes.
Well, what is the, I mean, are we?
If folks, if somebody wants to make a motion, well, entertain a motion. It sounds like there's general consensus to move forward, but I don't know how the votes will shake out. So it's up to council to make a motion.
Well, really quick, I wanted to talk about one more thing. Okay, because I was just, what I meant was, it sounds like we have consensus to stick with what we have now and not extend and re-rank. That's what, kind of what I wanted to confirm with head nods, if that was okay.
I think, to the very point, in the inverse, if someone wanted to suspend something, they would make a motion to-
We just need a motion to figure out where this council's going this evening.
I think, Amy, did you have some further comments?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, sorry. If nobody, sorry, if nobody wants to make a motion to suspend rules to allow us to re-rank the one, then essentially, we just continue on with the session then, right? Okay. So the other point, I just wanted to explain one thing, because I didn't know if this was obvious, is we had consensus in our committee to, so essentially, there were a couple of ways we could do it. So we, all individually on our own, went through and ranked scaling scores to each, and then they all ended up with an average score. And so we were able to essentially rank each of the organizations. And then it comes down to, well, we have this much money left. How do we allocate it based on those ranks? So again, this is us going through this brand-new process. So there was one suggestion that we could do, like, 5,000 to each of the first and second, 3,000 to the third and fourth, and 2,000 to the fifth. And I believe our consensus, the council members on that committee, was to use the rank to go by what was requested by each organization until it depleted through the ranks. So I just wanted to make sure that council was on board with our decision, our recommendation on that.
Mayor President Rainnington?
I think the process that you used is appropriate and defensible, if you will, and it's also common sense. I know there's a lot of different ways to parse out the money. Again, we ache inside that we don't have more allocated this time, but we have a brand-new budget coming up for the next two years, and I hope we can do much better. With that, I have a motion that we approve Agenda Bill 20-13, authorizing the human services grant funding allocation as outlined by our committee.
Second? Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we have no unfinished business or executive session. Analysts or adjutants, we are adjourned. Thank you.